All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the school committee's December 7th meeting. I just want to make a note for the public that we are not live broadcasting this evening on YouTube, but we will be available on cable broadcast as per usual. But I just wanted to make that announcement for this meeting. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance, as always, calling this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please silence our cell phones for the duration of the meeting, please. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. I didn't call the meeting to order. Do you have to take a vote to open the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to open the meeting, please?
So move.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll start with the approval of minutes, payroll and warrants. If I could request a motion of approval, please, for the minutes of November 7th, 2021?
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And if I could have a motion of approval, please, for payroll and warrants?
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, and then we're going to move into our delegation portion of the meeting. Kelly, did anyone sign up for delegation this evening? Just a reminder for future meetings, we are having a sign up process now, so if you want to speak at delegation with regard to something on the agenda, when you enter the meeting, just check in with Mrs. Benavides and she will sign you up for delegation.
No doubt.
No one on the list this evening, okay. Thank you. So we'll begin with new business, or no, old business. If we could have an update on mask mandate, Dr. Bailey?
Yep, I don't have anything. The last update we have is that the masks mandate is still required until at least January 15th for the Commissioner of Education, and we should be hearing something this month, if not the beginning of January, about any possible changes at that time.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Paula, can you just go over what the policy is for our school, the mask breaks that we still have, the children?
So right now, there's mask breaks. Everyone is required in the school buildings to wear a mask, adults and children. We haven't had any issues with it, and the mask breaks are built right into the school day, into the schedules. So anyone who drives by or visits our schools, you'll see children outside consistently in different areas taking mask breaks.
And they're approximately two a day for about five minutes or so?
Yeah, I mean, I covered a class yesterday and I actually asked the students while I was there, is do you get a mask break this period? And they said, no, we just recently had one. But I know the thing is, the students feel as though that they need one and it's not scheduled. There's things in place where they can go out to the hallway and take, you know, their mask down a bit, whatever. You know, we're very accommodating, but we haven't run into any issues with the mask wearing at all.
And this is district-wide, for both schools?
Yeah, both schools.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a question. I don't know if it's not really on the agenda, not sure that we'll get to it. Not sure if this is appropriate place to do it, but was there a recent change to the test and stay policy?
Yes, there's been recent changes to the test and stay policy. The last thing that I have noted is that if somebody at home has COVID, they can no longer, and the child is a close contact, they can no longer utilize the test and stay program. So we're putting information out to our families, but I can tell you that this information on the test and stay changes by the day. I think across the state, they've struggled with resources, so I'm not sure if that has to do with why these changes are happening. We've had a pretty successful thing in place, so I thought that was unfortunate personally, but you know, I've asked Kim Beck and Co., who handles our COVID protocols and such, to keep data on how that impacts our district and how many kids are going to be quarantining, just so we can see the difference. But we still have our test and stay person or people in our buildings, but honestly, it hasn't been, we haven't seen high numbers of kids accessing that test and stay like we thought we would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I was just wondering, as a district, if there was something that we could do, maybe get our hands on some of the tests that they would otherwise use to that program? Maybe, do we have the authority? Or do we have the way with author to do something like in our own district?
Now, Sheriff, if you don't mind, I'd love to call up our Director of Student Services, Kim Beck and Co., and I know she'd be more than happy to answer that.
Sure.
Because she's in touch with these folks on a pretty much daily basis.
All right, cool.
So just to build on what Paula said, if there's an immediate family member who's positive for COVID, kids have to automatically quarantine for 10 days. So that's the new change, they can't be part of test and stay, and they do have to quarantine for 10 days. It's 10 days from onset of symptom for the positive person. So if somebody was symptomatic last Tuesday, we start counting from there. I've got a lot of parents this week calling because information goes out pretty much every Friday and the FYI is in the newsletters, and then there's a change. So it is very confusing, but that is the newest change to the guidelines. To your question, we have signed up for test and stay through the Commonwealth. Any materials we have are part of that program. So if we decided we were going to go on our own and kind of disintegrate the program, we'd have to, those supplies would go with the program and we'd have to order our own, which would also mean that our nurses would have to give the COVID testing, and right now, we don't have the capacity to do that in this district.
Right, and so what that means is if there's a close contact at home, they're in quarantine for 10 days, but then if that student then becomes COVID positive, they start a brand-new
Not necessarily.
Set of, set of, not necessarily, okay.
The thinking is that you've already been exposed, so therefore, you're in that period and you won't have to re-quarantine.
So you're saying that a child that's beyond the 10 days but is COVID positive and has symptoms can return to school?
We'd have to look at all the dates and figure out the number of time, the number of days that they've already been out, the timeframe. It's, those are the tricky ones when it's kind of double.
Right.
But we have to look at the timeframe, because there is a window where they say you don't have to quarantine a second time if you're within a certain number of days. So we'd have to look at that in detail.
Okay.
We had a case like that, and somebody was positive and then living with a close contact, and they didn't have to quarantine twice.
I'd just be concerned that if this is impacting enough people, like we're going to have, like what should we be doing about it?
Right.
Whether it's figuring out a way to test them on our own, or?
Well, they can test, right? They can go to their doctors and get a PCR test.
They can go to the town.
And they can go to the town.
Those Tuesdays and Saturdays, I've been referring families there. It's a nice option. It's twice a week, so if you're feeling lousy at the beginning of the week, you can go on a Tuesday. If it's later in the week, you can go on a Saturday.
So they can do that even if they've got a close contact at home that's COVID positive, the 10 days?
Completely separate from us, yeah. Under the test and stay, if it's an immediate family member, you have to quarantine. The town does not follow that, that's, you know, they just do regular testing for anybody.
Got it.
So just for clarification, so if a mother has COVID, the child has to quarantine for 10 days, but can't that child get tested, a PCR test, like three days later and then be able to come back to school three days later?
Not under the new guidelines.
Not under the new?
Right.
Because we're part of test and stay, we have to adhere to those guidelines.
But then we're changing it and saying, oh yeah, by the way, but you can't test and stay in our...
Right.
Oh, I don't, that's not right.
Yes, I had two COVID, I had two COVID webinars this week, and that's the case.
So that, so in other words...
That's not helping our kids.
Well, it's not, I think the message is it's not an issue yet, but it could become one. And so I think it's something worth...
Yeah, what I would recommend, just so that we can continue with our agenda this evening, is that maybe we discuss this at a workshop
Okay.
in more detail, and then we can...
Yes, can we put that on the workshop?
Yep.
Sure.
Cool.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Bailey, superintendent's report.
Sure, so the first thing you have in your package is the personnel report. You'll see, since our last meeting, we had two resignations and one termination. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions here. No questions here.
Okay. And tonight, you'll see in the agenda, I'm trying something different by putting the strategy from our district plan or the goal number. You know, if that doesn't work out, I might do something on a separate sheet for the committee, just so that you can see with these presentations how they're aligned to what we're doing, our district plan. So the first one, we're going to hear a lot of things about Ford Middle School tonight, what's going on at Ford, and this has to do with our community outreach goal. And, you know, I'll actually call up the principal, Mrs. Sylvia, to do the introductions.
Hi. So I am excited, I have three groups of students here. My PowerPoint will show you, they are going to present. They're excited, they're nervous, but excited most of all to be here. So I don't know if you, you may not have the presentation, I used a new format.
No, because we just got it, nope.
So I did add in... So the Apex, the online learning, we spoke about that when Ms. Chesney and I presented our school improvement plans and our strategic. So the Apex Learning is giving some students in grades 6, 7, and 8 a chance to pick an elective, and it accelerates their learning choices. And so right now, I'm going to show you currently what we have. One student on appreciation, five in a computer science, and this is totally online, 10 in a creative writing, two in economics. Sorry, this program is new to me. Three in environmental science, 12 in financial literacy, five in geography and world cultures, two in the living earth, and this is what the students got to choose what they wanted to do. Two in media literacy, three in music appreciation, one in personal communication, and two in US government. That totals about 47 students currently in the Apex Online Learning Program. So we're excited about that. So my first go-ahead right now is our new STEM program we have. We have Mr. Greenhalgh, who's first year here with us, and we have two students with him, Jaden and Delsey. Why not?
Thank you very much. Yes, I just want to thank Mrs. Sylvia for this opportunity this evening to be able to share, but not only that, to brag on my students. I thank Jaden and Delsey for presenting tonight. And I just kind of see a few other middle school students here tonight, just thank them as well. And as you said, I think they're very excited, but also very nervous. Wonder if we could just come around and applaud to start with. And so, yeah, I'm really excited about Ford and just its value for STEM education. Our focus is hands-on, minds-on approach with project-based challenges. Our STEM curriculum... Okay, great. So our STEM curriculum does touch on all these aspects of science, technology, engineering and mathematics, but really baked into our curriculum is these four Cs, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity. These have been kind of labeled 21st century skills, right? So these are these soft skills that are really important, and our students choose one of these Cs as a goal for the semester, and they set these and work on these throughout everything that we're doing. So Delsey and Jaden, they, one of the things that they want to improve on is their public speaking. I'm happy to have them challenge themselves tonight to go beyond what we do in class and stand up and give little mini talks to, now being able to stand up in front of the committee and share with you. So some of the problems that we encounter, I think as teachers, is, you know, how do we save our students' work and how we showcase our students' work? How do we have a record for them to be able to reflect on what they've been doing to look back at the progress that we've made? So one of the things that I'm incorporating into STEM is Google Sites. And Google Sites is, you can use it for a lot of different ways, but also, one way that we can use this is portfolios. And students have the opportunity to personalize this themselves and tell a little about themselves, and get the creativity in there for sure. And you can add different pages to it. One of these pages is a STEM page where they can save all the different projects that they have been doing. So these are the few, a few of them that we have done. And I'm going to, so this is really what we're showcasing tonight. I'm going to let my students take it from here. So, Jaden, are you ready to go?
Yes.
All right, great. So I just suggest this for you.
Okay, so right here is my portfolio, which is all about me. So I wrote like stuff that is about me, and so I said that I'm a triplet, and my nationalities are Puerto Rican, Cambodian. I have my favorite movies, some of my favorite movies, and some of my favorite places that I visited before, and what I want to be when I grow up, which is a doctor. Right here is my STEM page, which we did all our projects on. So right here is my newspaper challenge, my mini-passion project, my birth cam, my 10-foot boat, my hot air balloon project, and I have computers. I'm going to be talking about the mini-passion, the mini-passion project. So this is called a mini-passion, mini-passion presentation because of the time we had to spend on it, which was two days. For this project, we have to choose an area that we are passionate about and then research it, an area that we want to improve on, which is communication. There are a few communication goals for this project. Use Google Slides in a way we haven't used them before and present to the class. So I'm going to be showing you my project right now. So I have a few slides that I want to show you guys. So this is my introduction. So I just, one reason why I want to be a doctor is helping people in need. So I always felt like I want to help people in need, and that is why I want to be a doctor. I did a COVID-19, many people are dying, and nurses and doctors are helping them survive. Helping others is not really good for people and doctors. It's good, it makes us healthier and happier too. Okay, so how can I make a difference, how can I make a difference being a doctor? Doctors for the positive impact, and, I think, yeah. Doctors for the positive impact on numerous lives and numerous others. It's not just the ability to heal diseases, it's the ability to save lives. And, yeah, so it's not just the ability to save lives, it's the ability to heal diseases. Okay, why I want to be a doctor? So that's just what I put in stuff. So why I want to be a doctor? I can save lives and learn about the human body. There's a lot of things to learn about the human body, and medical students and doctors have the opportunity to learn about it with the most advanced technology. And that is what I want to do at a good school and medical school. What you have to do to be a doctor? There are many things that if you become a doctor. You have to complete the undergraduate application. You have to go to college for 10 or more years. You have to apply for medical school, finish medical school, pass Part 1 and 2 of the United States Medical Listening Examination and Bachelor's residency. So if you want to be a doctor, you have to show that you're putting a lot of effort into it and show that you, like, that you want to reach your goal. What's the hardest thing you have to do to be a doctor? Even though I want to save lives, doctors, not every doctor can make a patient live. Doctors every day have to tell the families that they, that their loved ones passed on, and that, and that is very hard for the families and the doctor. Every person in the medical field feels differently, but a patient dying is very hard for everyone. College. What is the best school to study to become a doctor? The best school to study to become a doctor is Stanford University at Mercy, because Stanford offers a one-of-a-kind environment for the medical students, and there is a, like... There is a curriculum, and it's a diverse community, and it's just really good to study there and to become a doctor.
Thank you, that was fantastic.
So hi, there is Delsey. I have one brother, a mom, a dad, and a dog. My dream is to become a nurse or a doctor. I would also love to become a professional dancer. I always make sure I apply in 110% effort and try my best every time. My favorite colors are white and purple. My favorite subjects are Sarah and Eli. Some of the places that I like to eat is Enzo, TGI Fridays, Park Place, KFC, and the Mill. My favorite movies are Elf, Ghostbusters, and all of those other movies. And then this is my STEM page. It has a bunch of other projects that we did in the past, and I learned to be presenting my hot air balloon presentation. So this is my hot air balloon presentation. For this project, we're going to, we're going to challenge to make a hot air balloon that would rise 12 feet in the air and stay in the air for 15 seconds. At the end of, at the end of each of our projects, we always make the presentation that summarizes things we did. One major side concept that we've investigated with buoyancy, which is the object's ability to float. These are my prototype photos. Those were, the first image shows a door template, which shows the dimensions and how wide it's going to be. And then the second image shows my prototype hot air balloon. These are my prototype dimensions. My partner was 100 inches chase. My, the height was 12 inches, the circumference was about 17 inches, the width was 60 inches, and the base was five and a half inches, and the weight is 10 grams. This is my prototype reflection. The question of the reflection is after seeing your prototype, what changes have you made to your final design? And I said, I will take my time and make sure the things that we've applied to it. I will also make sure to put the base line together so it will support some of that. And then these are my prototype materials. And then this is the final design photos. That's my door template, that I showed you on the first slide. And then that is my hot air balloon that I finished up with. This is my final design dimensions. My partners were Jaden, Sarah, Rex, and me. The height was 29 and a half inches, the circumference was 66 inches, and the width was 40 inches, and the base was eight inches, and the weight was 34 inches. This is my reflection. And I said, I was challenged to make the bases more even, and I was not very good at making the hot air balloon not hold. I think that we were good at making it fly, and we did find holes, but we tried to remedy better. Not only that, but we were also good at folding, and we were not good at making the door. We made two more doors. I think that we were better at moving the tissue together. I think that using tape, the weight of the hot air balloon not hold was high. I think I grew my ability to talk to people. In the next project, I will work on talking nicely and being patient with my partners. I can also work on being on topic, because sometimes you can get off talking. And my hot air balloon did not pass the test of flying for the Aaron Winkles.
Great job, Delsey.
Mr. Greenhalgh, I just would like to thank you and your students, Jaden and Delsey. Outstanding job articulating your projects. I had the pleasure of spending some time in your classroom when they were working on these portfolios, and I can tell you that your students were all engaged. They were really grappling with some of these projects themselves and doing a really nice job. So I know that both of you are going to go far in life, and I'm really proud of you. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Great job, guys. Thank you for coming tonight.
So the next one we have, our 7th and 8th grade band students were able to visit New Bedford High School, and they put on a little clinic for us. And we have Mr. Shambrun here, Madeline Gamlin, and Peter Gamlin. Madeline's in the 8th grade, Peter's in the 7th grade. Mr. Shambrun's been here for a few years.
Uh, yeah, a few, thank you for that. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Shambrun, I'm the music teacher here at Ford. Behind me are, well, sorry, to the side of me are Peter and Matty. They are fantastic students, as are all our students. I just wanted to say. A few months ago, when we got back to school, I started reaching out to the high schools that we feed to, Fairhaven and New Bedford, the ones with music programs. And we've traditionally gone to visit Fairhaven and see a concert there. And there's a little bit of discourse, interchange, but there's not much really work together. So I was hoping that we could get some clinics happening, and Fairhaven was interested, but they weren't sure how they were going to do it. New Bedford immediately said, yes, let's get on it. And they planned it, I think it was like under three weeks that we went from, hey, we have an idea, to, okay, see you tomorrow. And Fairhaven has already kind of reached out, and they want to do the same thing in the spring. So we went to New Bedford and had a little band clinic with the New Bedford staff. One of the first things we did was an intro to jazz with Mr. Mason, and I did want to shout out Mr. Mason, who is a town resident, has a child at AES. And he has a vested interest in this. He wants to see the Christianate School music program grow and become big and successful as we have in the past, and to kind of expose our kids to the larger world of music. Sometimes, even when we go to the Fairhaven High concerts, we only hear one song by the jazz band, one song by the orchestra. It's very quick, and so it was a good chance for us, when we went to New Bedford High, to really get in-depth with some of those groups. and, and learn some of the ins and outs and what it really means to be a member of a jazz group versus a seventh grade concert. So I'm gonna turn this over to the students.
First of all, good afternoon, I am Madeline, I play the flute here at the band. Um, so a few weeks ago, we were able to go visit New Bedford High School, which was really an amazing experience. We started off with the jazz clinic with Mr. Mason, where we were able to learn the difference between jazz music and our typical band concert music. It was very different from what we've ever seen or ever done, but it was amazing to be able to learn. We then did our concert clinic with Mr. Chico, which they were all amazing. All the students were able to help us and all the younger high schoolers to get through this and to learn a new piece of music throughout the clinic. It was really inspiring to see some of the seniors helping the sophomores at New Bedford High. And to be able to know that when we go to high school and hopefully join a band, that we won't be the only ones that will have helped us well from now on. I would like to thank Mr. Shambrun and Miss Sylvia, the school committee, for allowing us and organizing this trip. It was amazing, it was lots of fun, and I think it was really beneficial to all of our band students.
Thank you, Madeline.
Good afternoon, everybody, my name is Peter Gamlin. I play, I am percussionist in the seminary band that, um, who played the drums and the bells. Um, we, we got to go to the field trip. The percussionist got a special opportunity to go into band room with the drum line teacher, Mr. Kareem. And it was, it was amazing. I couldn't ask for anything better, it was very hands-on. We even learned some warm-ups that helped us a lot. Um, we got to play the drums, they let us, um, it's very interactive. Um, all the, the, some of the New Bedford, uh, high school students, one of us, and they taught us how to play. And it was, it was, uh, very cool seeing how we can, um, how they take music and they play to this whole show. Like that, it's very impressive. And it just made me wanna go play drums more, it made me want to really pursue my dream of playing drums professionally. Second, I went home, I went and played my drums. I, that's, it's, it's a, it's a passion. And I, that field trip was a ton of fun. I really do hope we get to do it again. I'd like to thank Mr. Shambrun, Miss Sylvia, and the school committee for allowing us to go. That was amazing, thank you so much, hopefully we get to do it again.
Great job.
Um, if you follow us on social media, Ford MS Music, on Twitter and Facebook, there's one of our photos. There's Peter playing the quads. Um, Peter kinda undersold it, I know he was really excited. It was actually really cool. Uh, so what they did was they got to rotate around the different drums, the marching snare drum, marching quads, and marching bass drums. Um, and we do, I, I know Peter was very excited, but he said they taught them how to play the drums. Like, I think I knew that too. But the marching style's quite different. And, and moving the feet while you play is not something we do in middle school. Uh, so like getting them mentally prepared for marching and playing at the same time is huge. Um, and while I'm here, I'm gonna just, I won't say hijack the meeting, but I'm gonna redirect the meeting. There are two concerts this week, Wednesday and Thursday at three P M. Uh, tomorrow, Wednesday at three P M is the sixth grade concert. And then Thursday is seventh and eighth grade band and chorus. Um, so please come, you're very welcome, I'd like to have the public there. Um, there's social distancing, we have plenty of room for everyone, masks are required. Um, and the, the fifth grade concert today was excellent, we had a great turnout. And it was very exciting to see fifth graders playing instruments. Um, and one, one thing, um, I know you recognized a donation at last month at the meeting. I would just like to formally thank Mrs. Gavush, or Mrs. Watts, depending on how you pronounce it. Um, she made a very sizable donation to the Ford Middle School Music Program. Um, and we got our first delivery today. And the first thing we got are these brand new uniform t-shirts. So every student in band and chorus is gonna get one of these. Um, that is our new uniform, and from here on out, we're gonna stick with this. So thank you for the clarification on Navy Blue versus. So thank you very much for all your support. And we look forward to coming back and showing them all the cool things we're doing the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, excellent.
We do have one more event to highlight. Our annual Turkey Bowl is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We had almost two hundred students wanna participate in Turkey Bowl, and then I had almost two hundred students stay in. And one of the activities was a PBIS apple crisp event. And I chose, it, all the students who received a PBIS character award for term one were invited. Some of them did choose to go play flag football, which was great. So, but there were seventy-eight students, school-wide, who are recognized for respect, responsibility, and character. And I have two with me, Leah, Nylengara's a seventh grader, and Cody Sylvia is a fifth grader. They both were recognized for responsibility. So I turned it over to Michelle Mello. I know Mrs. Kristen Flynn, and if Cody and Leah can come on up here, please? Yes, come on up, thank you.
Hi, um, so the apple crisp started with Mrs. Sylvia reaching out to Mrs. Sheridan, the food service director, and asking her if she could come up with a food activity that the students could do if they didn't wanna participate in the Turkey Bowl. So they came up with the apple crisp, with the warning that there would be knives. But we all did well. We counted fingers when they left, and they were all there. Um, we, they needed some volunteers, so Kristen Flynn, myself, Becky Alfrey, Alice Owen, Helen Morris, and Casey Poulsen all stepped up and we started the project. The, the, um, apple crisp was started at tables, so they had stations and they started with peeling, which they found out wasn't as easy as mom and dad made a complaint it was. We had a lot of apples fall in the garbage. Then they did the choring and the, and the slicing of the apples. It was a nice, it ended up being good for socializing as well. They talked about the Thanksgiving, where they were gonna go, and who was gonna be there. So it turned out to be a social activity as well as not just making the apple crisp. After they finished choring, they chored and sliced and, and peeled approximately five hundred apples. They put on the toppings and they put them in a serving pan of eight. So each one of the students, so it was approximately sixty students that took home serving dishes of eight apple crisps with the heating instructions. So they got to have them at their, either the Thanksgiving dinner or, or that night they got to bake them. Um, I think everybody had a good time.
I think they're gonna add some things, maybe Leah wants, yes, yes. Yes.
Um, during this activity, we were able to all associate with each other. And it was fun for the social part of it, not alone. But during the actual cooking, we were able to learn new skills, which was nice to have under our sleeve. And we're also able to, um, color, which is, we all made photo pieces. And then the worksheet is up in the cafeteria, which you can see it when you walk by. And it was fun because you were able to see everyone's, um, personalities thrown into it. And then, um, it was nice for socializing because I got, I was able to talk to my other friends in different grades.
And Cody? I think you helped out a big, a lot also.
I really liked it because it let me talk to my friends because they were in other classes and I didn't really get to talk to them much. And it was fun choring the apples.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm just so lucky and blessed here to have responsible students like you and Leah. And everyone there was a, a very respectful, respectful, and great character student, very good, thank you. And I thank you, um, the families who brought all the kids here today. We love having you here. When you're not here, it's Mr. Gary, Miss Chesney, and myself here. So I thank you, you can come back next week.
I would just like to add, oh wait, Mrs. Flynn, sorry, my, um, apple crisp group. I was lucky enough to have these two students in my groups. We have two different groups. And, um, you know, not being a teacher, I was now charged with having ten children, ten students, under my care, um, using peelers and knives and, um, keep order and still move it along in the established time. So in my first group was Leah, and she was a leader. She knew exactly what to do, she helped me organize the other students. And, um, when her group was done, she came back and was helping assemble all of the, the trays for the second group of kids. So I really appreciated that. And, and Cody, he was a lot of fun in my second group. Um, I think he, he wanted to use the, the big people's knives, so that was, that, that added some extra challenge to it. Um, so maybe in a few years, um, but, you know, um, I didn't want to get in trouble. So we started with the, the small knife. But then what especially stood out to me about Cody too is when we finished, um, the students went and made the, um, colored the, the signs, and then they had some time to socialize with their friends. And Cody noticed that I was helping Mrs. Mello and the other staff sweep up the floor and start to clean up so that the custodians wouldn't have such a massive job at the end. And he took the initiative and he came right up to me and asked if he could help. He helped me sweep up and he stuck with it. He, um, was still sweeping until finally I said, okay, I think we're all done for now. So Leah and Cody, I really appreciate your help. You helped me a lot, um, it was a new experience for me, we had a lot of fun. But all my students that I had were great, um, but I mentioned to Mrs. Sylvia that I wanted to send you guys a shout-out every week, so. I don't usually get to do that, so that was exciting for me, so thank you.
No, thank you, any questions?
Oh, no, I, no questions at all, but I'd also like to thank Christine Vardo from the PTO, who helped us with the hot chocolate and Mrs. Sheridan. Um, Lisa and Scott Bryant was there and Jen Almeida. We served six hundred cups of hot chocolate that day, and it was like twenty degrees out. So I'd just like to thank the PTO for, for donating that and making that happen.
We, we lost our worker, our helpers for a time, the hot chocolate was. We used Mrs. Mello doing some of it, but they came back.
Thank you, everybody.
So I hope you see and feel how passionate our students are, um, in, in all three areas that we presented tonight. Even with the apple crisp, the students all had on chef hats. Um, everybody was extremely passionate, um, in all of their presentations tonight. Uh, any questions for me?
No, this is great, thank you for, for putting those presentations together.
Excellent, thank you. The next, um, thing I have on the agenda is building-based sub benefits. So as you can see, we have, um, two building-based subs in each building. Um, and that, we started during COVID so that, uh, these folks would work every day to fill in when a teacher was absent. And these folks get utilized every day. Uh, we really need them, we've come to rely quite a bit on them. And, and we're so fortunate, the people that we have hired have been excellent. Um, as a matter of fact, one has certification, um, in teaching. So, you know, there's no benefits, they're not in the union. Um, and we just think, you know, my recommendation would be to give them something, um, because these folks come to work for us every day. So my recommendation would be to give them, uh, five, six days, one personal day, and one bereavement day that they would be able to carry over if they're, you know, not used. Or very similar to the way teachers carry them over. You can't carry over certain things after a year, but, um, we would work, work that out. Um, I did bring this up to the budget subcommittee, and the budget subcommittee did, um, approve it. So I wanted to bring it to the full committee for a vote, um, so that we could begin to do that, if the committee so desires.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bailey. Um, yeah, the budget subcommittee did discuss this, we both were in agreement that we felt this was fair. Um, and so if you, you know, just wanna open up to the two of you if you have any questions or comments, but otherwise, we would just bring it to a vote of approval. No problem with that? No? Okay, so if I could request a motion of approval of the, that, these new benefits for building-based subs? So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, something else that was brought up, um, before the budget subcommittee was our technology director position. That in the past has been a shared position between the school district and the town. Uh, the town pays, I believe, seventeen point five percent of the salary, which equals out to about two afternoons a week that the tech director would go over to the town. Um, we are finding, both on the town side and the school side, that we have more and more technology needs. Everything we do is technology, our digital platforms, even nursing, everything we do revolves around technology. So, um, I have been in touch with the, um, town administrator throughout the year. And she knows, um, that my recommendation would be that we put someone in the position full-time on the school side. So that would also require a vote of the school committee.
Okay, any questions?
No, I have one question. Uh, if it's seventeen percent on the, uh, town side, how are they fair until the new budget is passed where they can probably make it a full-time? In other words, how, well, who will be?
So I've reached out to the town administrator to offer assistance. We have two technicians in our district right now who work solely, really, for the school department. But they're, they're very knowledgeable about other technology within the town. I'm just waiting for a response back if, um, she wants that assistance.
We have it in the budget.
Yeah, we have it in the budget. I, I, I'm just, just, I'm just, uh, questioning a unilateral type of, of change. And whether the, the town itself, which is now going through some administrative changes, will be shot changed in this, in this area.
Right.
And whether they'll have a, any type of, of coverage, whether it should be transitioned in. Uh, you know, uh, you know, especially when, when a new minister, town administrator comes on board.
Uh, I, I'm just questioning, I'd like to hear from the town, whoever's doing the town administrating right now.
Right.
How they are going to be able to deal with, with, you know, with the seventeen percent? Whether they're gonna have to go to the finance committee, you know, for, for reserve fund transfer? Uh, to, you know, to have, make it a full-time position or fifty percent or merge one of their positions? I don't know.
I don't know either.
But I, I, I just, I just question, we do have agreements and do have understandings that we unilaterally pull out, even though we may have very good reason to do so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I just, uh, you know, I just, you know, it just, it just question, a credibility becomes questioned.
So that's a good point, Mr. Haukraft. And throughout the entire process, I have offered assistance to the town. Um, so far, they have not taken me up on it, but I put out another email. Um, recently, I'm just waiting for a response. So, you know.
And we can't continue to wait.
Leave anybody hanging in any way, shape, or form.
Right.
But my, you know, my responsibility is to make sure that we have what we need on the school side.
Correct.
But at the same time, I'm certainly a team player and, um, have made that offer to the town, just waiting on a response.
Was the contract that we had with the town with that specific person, or was it just in general that position?
It, it has the person's name on it.
Okay.
So that's something that we're gonna have to look at together, to work out.
Okay. Timing is a little bit of essence here, I know of essence here, because I know, Dr. Bailey, the technology needs are great, and you're really looking to start this process for hiring. So, I mean, I, I, I can understand when a, a, you know, a department is short-changed staff, they're gonna have a harder time getting back to requests and communication. So I'm not sure how long we can continue to wait, you know, I'm just.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand that. Um, I understand, and I know you probably need approval for the additional money, is that correct? Is this with this?
No.
No.
It's just basically to make it one hundred percent under our budget.
This is something we wanna work into the budget for next year and, you know, compensate with any savings from this year. I mean, right now, we're without a technology director, so we are gonna have some savings until we hire someone. Um, so I think we'll be okay this year, and then we'd have to look at, uh, the salary going into the budget season for next year.
So it's really about the structure of the position itself that we're seeking a vote on?
That would be the vote, uh, the structure. And, you know, this is not new news to the town. I've been talking about it ad nauseam with the town administrator. So she's very well aware of our needs. And she's also expressed a need for additional technology support on the town side.
So it's sounding like the town is also considering changing the structure on their side as well? That a shared position is not necessarily.
I don't know, I don't wanna speak to anybody on the town side. I don't know, I don't want to speak to anybody on the town side.
Look, regarding the school committee and the school, our district, we need somebody 100% of the time.
Right.
I would like somebody physically here 100% of the time for our technology needs. Everything we do revolves around technology, we need somebody who is competent and able to help us, has that capacity to help us with everything. So for example, tonight, we're not live streaming, there's a reason for that, we don't have a person who's able to get that going right now.
Without making an amendment, is it possible that we proceed with your recommendation? On the other hand, the offer that you've made can also include this position during their transition, in the town's transition period, to be available to assist them since they've had very, you know, three key people leave, are leaving. You know, the town treasurer, you know, the town administrator, the building inspector. So there's really a void, and, you know, we're all together in this business.
Absolutely.
Whether that person can still be available on your supervision type of auspices to continue, is that possible? So therefore, as the town goes through with their administrative transition period, they have a resource, whatever that person has, in order to continue with their work.
I hear everything you're saying, I think one of my concerns about that is when you're interviewing people for a position, you know, the position really would be to be on the school side. I can't speak to what the technology needs are on the town side. I really have no idea what the Council on Aging, the Police Department needs are. So I think it would be difficult for a new person coming on to really understand and know all the things in town and the school side. I'm not sure how attractive that would be either, to a new person coming into a position like this, to be a shared position. However, as I said, I have two technicians who are very good. They know things in the town as well as the school side, and I'm willing to work with the town, even if I have a technology director and they know something, we're all hearing it together to work on it. I'm just waiting for a response from the town.
Correct.
So, you know, we're not closing the door on anything, but I think moving forward, the idea is we would like to have our own position here 100% of the time. You know what happens is, you know, the person's supposed to go over two afternoons a week, but then something happens at the police station, and they're down, so that person has to run off and go, and then, you know, things are happening here, right? So the needs are great in both areas. We, I just would like to advocate for the school district to have a full-time technology director moving forward. Everything we do, digital platforms for curriculum, our Aspen systems, our student management systems, everything we do is technology now.
I was on the, I was on the budget committee when this all transpired, when we were sharing it, and it was presented to us that it was definitely a doable thing to have this split up and have that 17% go to the town, and it should work out, and so on and so forth. So I believe myself and the other, Craig Sumner was on the budget subcommittee with me, and, you know, we said, you know, sure, let's try this out. I don't think it was a permanent, it was a three-year, the MOA was not short-lived, right? It wasn't like a permanent.
No, it wasn't a permanent thing.
Right, because we were gonna reevaluate after a certain time to see if it was working out. And now we can see that it was not working out to the district's benefit, or to the town's, because when the town needed something and the person had to be here, vice versa, you know, it just, there's too much work to go around to split it up.
I understand, sharing, sharing, I've been through this in the past. Sharing is sometimes very problematic, very, you know, inadjuous. But the point is, the point is that I'm, and I'm hearing from you, that you've given the town administrator, and through, could be the selectmen, because that person should be communicating to the selectmen ample notice that we would want to have, we're going to go through a change.
I went to the town administrator, yes.
That has been communicated, yeah.
Okay, so that has been communicated, that's why I make a point. So if there's no response, then that's their issue, not our issue. Is that, would that be an understanding?
Yes, but with the same understanding that we're not closing the door on anybody, that if somebody needs assistance, we'll work together.
So you've made some offers, they get exigencies as far as, say, with the police station, you know, and they get, you know, you know, that's, you know, public safety issues that we will have the resources to chip in in that, in that, in that situation, is it?
Correct.
Oh, is that my, I just want to make that as a public understanding.
Absolutely, nobody's going to be left high and dry here in this situation. We're just trying to work out, once I hear back from the town, the exact logistics of what they would like to see for a transition, let's say. But moving forward, I would need a vote for budget reasons and the role itself
Oh, yeah, you have to.
To be 100% full-time in the school district.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so if I could request a motion, please, of approval to change the technology director position to be full-time here at the district? No longer a shared position with the town?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I just want to reiterate, we have over, well over 1,000 Chromebooks, and those are the ones directly being used just by our students, never mind our staff, that we've got to keep up on the updates, et cetera. I mean, there's just so much with hardware and software that we definitely need the staff. So thank you for that vote, and that concludes my report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Flynn, over to you.
Okay, we have my reports, my typical reports in your packet. Part of my report was the discussion in school lunch, so we heard, we heard about that right from our students and Mrs. Mello, so they did a fabulous job with that. We have the school lunch reports for our lunches sold and our income and expense statement. Again, our revenues are coming strictly from reimbursement, so we have to provide meals in order to get reimbursed for them. There is no sales of meals, so there's no revenue from collecting cash for selling meals. So we try to provide the students with as many meals, with the breakfast, as possible to benefit them, and also to help sustain our program, because that's our only source of income. In terms of the budget, you do have the typical monthly reports, the budget update to the school committee, which lists our anticipated salary surpluses, and as you can see, there's quite a bit due to some positions from some hiring, hiring positions that less than were budgeted for, through the resignations, retirements, terminations, non-renewals. We also have some unfilled positions, they're the ones we have talked about in previous months in addition to the two resignations, the Chief Technology Officer and the Technology Integration Specialist that Dr. Bailey had in her report. We are also, I believe, close to or have hired a nurse at Ford Middle School, and also a phys ed teacher at Ford Middle School, so you'll see some changes on. Actually, that is, those two positions are incorporated in this report. And then we are still awaiting our tuition bills from New Bedford High School, so that will be some updates once we get those. And our out-of-district tuitions, you know, do change every month due to any changes that occur with that. And that's right now, that's basically it for the budget update.
And if I could just add, the new nurse and the phys ed teacher did sign contracts today.
Great.
So that's in process.
That's all I have for the budget, and the only thing, there's really no, everything is status quo with facilities, so that's good. Just doing some general repairs as we get our heating system back up and running for the winter, so there's always anticipated breakdowns, things that need to be adjusted. So that's all I have for the night.
Just a question.
Just one question.
Yes.
That's okay.
You mentioned in the Fairhaven High School, but you mentioned a rate increase. Is that basically part of the still the existing agreement that we have? There's what, I know the steps with the cost of living.
Right, that's correct.
You know, that each, you know, part of the year, is that just within the agreement? Those rate increases, not above, beyond?
No, it's not above, it's what the agreement is based on, the school choice rate that the Department of Ed determines. We use the same formula for both New Bedford and Fairhaven. Bristol-Aggie has a different tuition, and the increase there is due to an assessment that's been made to the member communities for the following years due to, I think, some of their new buildings. So every community that belongs to Bristol-Aggie, the district, has an additional assessment, additional on top of the tuition. So that's what the difference is there. And we, you know, unfortunately, that number was made known after we had finished the budget, so we did not have that to put into the budget. So that's why you see, you know, a deficit there because of the increase in the assessment that we were not aware of a year ago.
Right. Thank you, thank you very much.
Just a question, now with the recent hire, nurse hire, are we now at the capacity we want to see with nurses?
We've struggled, to be quite honest with you, with nursing. People are getting sick, I know the agencies are having a hard time with nursing. We actually put out posting for a subnurse, a long-term subnurse, if you will, that would be split between the two buildings.
That's right, we mentioned.
We've seen a huge increase in visits to the nursing office in both buildings, which makes it really difficult for the nurse to not only do care management, but also the associated phone calls and paperwork, et cetera. So, and on top of it, they still have to do all of the scoliosis checks, vision, hearing, and all that. So we did put out, you know, for a long-term substitute nurse, we are hopeful on that end. I was very pleased that we were able to bring someone on today for a contract position here at Ford Middle School. So I'm hoping that moving forward, it will get better. But we've had a few days of, you know, people are sick, and agency doesn't have anybody, I mean, it's everywhere with the shortages.
So we're still sort of in need in this area?
Yeah, nursing is a critical shortage area right now. I mean, I don't know, I don't know with, you know, South Coast, I know a lot of people didn't get vaccinated, and they were terminated. I don't know if anybody is a nurse who's interested in working in the school side, but, you know, we're always looking for good nurses.
Okay.
Even to sub.
Great, thank you. All right, school committee members, any reports or information to share with the community? Okay, so on that note, we have some communication that were in our packet listed there for your reference. We have no executive session this evening, so if there are no further questions or discussion, if we can conclude the meeting. So moved. Okay, so if I could have a motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
Yes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 11th, here at Ford Middle School at 5:30.